Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, April 19th Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting the call to order and ask, we don't have anyone signed up to offer an invocation and a pledge of allegiance. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to do that? If not, I'll ask if one of our board members would like to do that for us.
I'll do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Jarvis.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for the rain to replenish the earth. We just are so thankful for all that you do and all that you've done for us. I ask your wisdom, Lord, to be in this place tonight as we conduct the business of the people, to be fair, to be honest, and to move this county forward. In your holy name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Jarvis. The next item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make two amendments. The first item is to remove Item A under Old Business and move it to the May 3 meeting after a work session. And the second is to add a budget amendment to the consent agenda to convey funds to Currituck County schools to help with this year's cost of the senior prom.
Okay, thank you. Any other? Can I have a say? Motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Okay, the next item is public comment. I have no one signed up, but this is an opportunity for our citizens to come forward and speak on whatever you'd like to, to the county, address any issues, talk to the board directly, uninterrupted. So seeing none signed up, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come up and speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment and go into the Commissioner's report. And I guess this morning, or this afternoon, I'm going to start on my left, if I may, with Commissioner Jarvis.
Just congratulations, the Board of Trustees for the College of the Albemarle met on Tuesday. And at that meeting, Paul O'Neill was reappointed to fill an unexpired term. So congratulations and thanks for all that you do for the College of the Albemarle. And then welcome and congratulations to Ms. Emily Walker. She was appointed to serve a full term on the Board of Trustees for COA. And with her education and experience, I know she will do great things and make Currituck County proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jarvis. Commissioner Etheridge.
Thank you. I think we're all aware that volunteers are what makes a county great. Without dedicated citizens who give it their time and knowledge, a county would have a very difficult time providing some of the services that we do. I, along with Chairman Payment, Commissioner McCord, and Senior Citizen Director Stacy Joseph, had the opportunity to thank our tax preparation volunteers who completed over 240 returns from February the 18th through April the 8th. And a special thank you to the Currituck County AARP volunteers, John Dinscombe, Thomas Minosa, Charlie DeBello, Joanne DeBello, and Harry Thompson. I would also like to thank the DeBellos because they were instrumental in getting the Senior Citizen Center approved for AARP registration location. And also, they were instrumental during the COVID to find an alternate location for this free service, which has been going on in Currituck County since 2013. Again, make sure you volunteer your time, ask to serve on advisory boards, and become involved in the county because it does help to make Currituck County the best county it can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Etheridge. Commissioner White.
Sir, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Since we don't have much tonight, I'll take a little more time and go over a few things. We had our Tourism Advisory Board meeting this past week. Really good meeting. Chandler Thinks was in town for this one, and you guys remember him. He came and did a study for us and looked at tours and marketing and everything we were doing, and basically gave us a good thumbs up and ideas for improvements. And so he came back again and did another study and looked at, under COVID, what we were seeing for our customer base. About 76% of the respondents, there was over 700 respondents ultimately to this thing, but he based it on a little over 300, which gave him a statistical variant that was close enough for government work. 76% of the people that responded are actually repeat customers to Currituck County beaches. Most of those have been here for more than 10 years, have been coming back and forth. 24% obviously are new customers. Out of those 24%, almost every single one of them said they would make this a regular destination for their vacation. And it's kind of interesting because when we talk about it, in the last few years, we've been looking at millennials and what they do. They're experience-based type people. They go out and do one thing, one time. They don't kind of do traditional things that we maybe saw growing up where we went to the same vacation, we went to the amusement park every year with the family, we went to someplace to picnic, or whatever those types of things that are going on. And so at a tourism level, we were kind of worried about that. What does that look like? We have to constantly attract new customers. Well, looking at it over the last several years, that's not actually the case here. We're seeing, we're still having people come here, new people are finding us, and those same people are willing to establish a tradition here. So for the future, that certainly looks bright for us. I'm going to jump through, there's a couple different things in here. As far as their experience here, 4.4 out of 5 said we met or exceeded their expectations of the area. You know, we had a lot of talks about our beaches and erosion and the width of the beaches, and apparently, they think they're just fine. They're not concerned with overcrowding, we haven't heard any of that. We certainly would have seen that reflected in their comments if they were worried about our beaches being overcrowded. Our Facebook page, that was the other thing. In the first quarter alone, we reached over 9 million people on our tourism Facebook page. 162,000 people have watched the videos that we have put on our Facebook page, or we put out in general through tourism. That is just an unbelievable number. Myself and the chairman and the county manager, just before our last meeting, we're actually looking at our numbers, and we can kind of see the metrics of who's coming and when they're coming. And this year, which is probably not a big surprise, we're seeing a lot more people come in in March, April, and May. Kids are obviously able to remote in, and so are people for work. So we're seeing that. The summer's going to be gangbusters, pretty much normal. And then the fall, as of right now, it looks like it's returning more to a normal fall for us. Last year, we saw this incredible off-season, shoulder season in October, September, and October, and even into November. And weather played a big part of that. Kids couldn't go back to school, all the same conditions were there with COVID. But we also had a great weather situation. We didn't have any major storms or hurricanes or anything to affect that. But as it looks right now, people are not as certain about booking into the fall. So we're seeing more of a return to our normal kind of fall situation, which probably most businesses would actually be happy with because they're burnt out from not having enough staff at that point in time. So just overall, very positive for us as a county and where we're headed. And it was a great meeting. We had, we did a visioning session to look at the future. What does it look like? What was important to the tourism board members that were there and staff interacted? It was just a very good work session, and glad to be a part of that. That's it for me, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner White, good report there. What to expect here, which is going to be a lot this summer, it sounds like. I'm going to go give a little touch, touch base on updates on the COVID situation with Currituck County with regards to the Albemarle Regional Health, the latest report. Currituck currently has, let's see, 1,487 confirmed cases. Of those, nine cases are currently active. We have 1,463 recovered cases and 15 deaths. Albemarle Regional Health is also reporting that there are no deaths related to COVID-19 this week. In addition, in our region, there have been no active outbreaks, and that's a good sign. Things are really turning around for our region. And also, just as a reminder, Albemarle Regional Health is not doing any remote, if that's correct, for its clinics. You can still call them and make appointments. Then I'll let the county manager touch base, but I believe we're still going to have a few for second doses. I think one's scheduled for this Tuesday in Currituck if you need a second dosage. Other than that, just again, traffic's picking up, road work is going on to south end of the county, they're going to start paving that soon. And just be careful of the traffic out there and help out your fire departments all you can. That's all I've got. Thank you. Commissioner Court?
Touch on what Chairman Payment said, there's a COVID clinic tomorrow at the Maple Park YMCA, all that good, same place, same time. But no, tomorrow, it's 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, it's a second round clinic. It changes, we'll be out there. Last week, it was the second round clinic, and then there were some first round shots given. So call Albemarle Regional Health Services, I tell people, because I know a couple people were turned away last week, I knew who a couple of them were, I made some phone calls, they came back, they got their first shot. So they had shots there on scene, or on the property on site. I'd like to recognize, and I know we, Chairman Payment, and possibly maybe we'll touch a little bit more, but we had a real bad fire on Tolles Creek Road last week. And one of our firefighters, who's a full-time firefighter in Corolla, as well as one of our deputies, I believe it was on the news, actually, they saved two people's lives. They literally took them out of the house when the house was burning. They were elderly and they're, I'm probably going to get their ages wrong, I want to say 77 and 79, but I might be off on that. But they were over 75. Keith Storf, who's a paid fireman, as well as a volunteer at Crawford, and I believe, Ben, correct me, county manager if I'm wrong, I believe he's a paid fireman in Corolla, if I'm not correct. In Corolla, is he Knott's Island? He's either Corolla or Knott's Island, but he's, like I said, him and Deputy Caleb Edwards literally took two people out of the house while the house was on fire. So I mean, kudos to those guys. Two people, two seniors that are still here, compliments to them. And the fire department did a great job as well with, there were some vehicles there that were not burnt down, and their secondary building, they had a nice detached building that was not fire went to that neither. Seniors, myself and Commissioner Etheridge and Commissioner Payment, that was a good thing. They've been doing that like nine years, and I want to say they've done, you know, a couple thousand taxes for this year. The numbers were great, but they were actually down a little bit because of COVID. So those, there's a couple other people that have maybe done it in the last few years that we didn't have everybody's name, but I know Charlie DeBello and his wife Joanne, they've been doing that forever. And that's a good thing, too. I mean, like I said, there's so many people. Financially, when you retire, you're a senior, they don't have the money to go drop $300 or $200 on their taxes. We got citizens here in Currituck County, as well as neighboring counties, that are volunteering their time and their services. I made my father buy some gift cards for the guy that did his, you know, because I mean, they're donating their time. So the COVID cases numbered, nine cases out of 30,000 people, I'd say is pretty good. At least we're not having to wear a double mask, I guess, you know, maybe the mask will go away. I know Cooper visited Dare County last week, he didn't come see us, but you know, he missed the best county. But like I said, hopefully, everybody keep doing what they're doing. The numbers are low, they're minimal to zero, so that's a good thing. And I don't believe we've had a death in this county in the last, not in the last few months. I know it's, I mean, we've been on that 15 number, and I hope it doesn't go to 16, I hope it stays at that 15. So that's a good thing. So everybody keep doing what they're doing. And like I said, those numbers are going down to almost nothing, which is good, so things can get back to normal. And the traffic is heating up. Just plan on taking a little more time, people. Be patient. So I had a lady, after I, today, hit my blue lights in my rear of my unmarked patrol car to advise her to kind of get off my tail when she was tailgating, well, I think she was riding in the back of my patrol vehicle. But so I hit my rear lights, then she proceeded to pass me illegally after I'd done that, and I stopped her and I said, ma'am, and she said, I didn't even see him. But you know, she was elderly, she had something she was worried about at the house, so. But you know, drive safe, pay attention. I mean, she literally did not see four blue lights on the back of a car that like, that were on for about five seconds earlier today. So like I said, be aware of your surroundings on the roads. We've had a lot of accidents lately, a lot of accidents. So that's pretty much it for me. But COVID clinic tomorrow, 4:00 to 6:00. Yeah, I believe it may be our last second round.
It could be.
There possibly might be one more, but it won't hurt my feelings if it's the last one. So, all right, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Court, and Commissioner Etheridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Touch on something that Commissioner White said about staff burnout and shortages. I've seen two or three national news reports over the last two or three days about restaurants having to put placards in their doors saying, please be patient, due to staff shortages, wait time might be longer than expected. I went in a restaurant down in New Bern on Saturday, and they had that placard on the door. So if you go to a restaurant and you think the time is a little long, know that those people are working under a hardship, a lot of them. Lastly, last week was telecommunications week, and I have a special bias there, as many of you might know. But you know, our telecommunications do a great job. I mean, they deal with people probably at one of the worst times in that individual's life. And they have to be a little bit of a psychologist to try to get the correct information out of them. Yes, stuff pops up on the screen telling you their telephone number and hopefully their address, but they still have to find out what's going on. And I've been in there and watched and listened to our people as they work, and I've got to tell you, they are a very professional group, and we should all be very proud of the job they do. Because if they don't get it right, the fire department, the sheriff's department, and EMS might be delayed in getting there. So keep that in mind also. And when you, when you see a telecommunicator or any of our volunteer, any of our public safety people, tell them thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Etheridge. The next item is our county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got several things to go over this evening. The first one is that at some point in the near future, the libraries will return to normal operations. They're working through some operational tests right now. But so watch our website, watch Facebook, we'll get information out as soon as they go open officially so that people can come into the library. They will continue the curbside book service that they have offered through the pandemic because they've seen them, in other libraries around our region, when they go back and they reopen, but they do away with that, that the volume goes way down. People seem to really like that curbside service. So we're going to continue to do that. Hurricane season is around the corner, just so that the public knows, we'll be working behind the scenes to prepare for that, so the board's aware. We're going to put together a date so that the board can actually walk through a two-week timeframe in about half a day to show you what data we get, how we make decisions, and to work through with the elected body. I know a lot of you have been through storms before, but it's just good practice as we head into the hurricane season. Revaluation notices have come out, they mailed out last week. If you have any questions, you can reach out to the tax office at 252-232-3005. Just so for a little bit of basic information, revaluations are done in Currituck County every eight years. So the last time that those values and schedule of values was set was in 2013. So if you saw increases, that's part of the reason. It was done, the last revale was at the very bottom of, you know, the Great Recession. And so I know that there were some changes across the county, roughly a 20% increase countywide across all properties. There is a process, if you want to appeal your revaluation, it's actually on the notice that was mailed to you. So I'd encourage any citizens who are out there, property owners who feel like that an error was made, reach out to the tax office and they'll help you through that process. Wanted to go over a couple of pieces of legislation that the General Assembly has, that they filed. You've seen some of these in the news. One of them is actually relatively new. I'll start with the one that's a little bit older. It's House Bill 401, and it's titled, "The Increased Housing Opportunities Act." Both of these bills continue a trend that I find somewhat concerning, and that is a reduction of authority at the local level. This has been going on for several years now at the General Assembly. Bills will be filed. Luckily, and a lot of times, as it goes through the process, folks realize that that local level authority, that government that's closest to the people is very important, and so it doesn't actually end up moving forward. But I wanted to go through what House Bill 401, what it lays out, just so that folks out there, and so the board can hear this. As I go through both of these pieces of legislation, if the board is so inclined, I'd recommend a resolution that we can vote on at the next meeting formally stating our opposition to those. But House Bill 401, and there is a Senate bill that mirrors it. One of the things that it does is that it says that anywhere that you allow single-family residential dwellings, you would be required to allow up to quadplexes. So you would be able to put four units on the same lot that you could have a single-family house. And these are not local laws, this is something that would be statewide. So you know, hopefully anybody that's watching this understands that these are statewide effects that would happen. So it would also mandate that local governments would allow the development of one accessory dwelling unit on every lot. That can be a real concern for areas such as Corolla, where we don't have parking, to add a second dwelling at every single piece of property. So it'd be allowed by right. As we go through, there is, right now, the rules are that if a application is not complete, then we, at the staff level, have the option, and typically we do, to say, this is not a complete application, please bring it back to us when it's complete. This bill says that if there are minor emissions, it doesn't really lay out what those are, but whatever the courts would rule were minor emissions, they would be able to come through the process and continue to move forward. Another thing that's in this bill is that if you have multiple permits that are required, for instance, if you need a permit from the Division of Environmental Quality for sewer and a permit from the county, we could not make our permits contingent on any other permits. A good example of that, of a project in the last few years where y'all have, the board has done that, is down in the lower end of the county, where we said that before you could do that development, Cape Currituck, you had to have Core approval for the marina. There's other things that it goes into that, for example, if there is the potential to extend water or sewer to property, you can't treat it differently. In other words, you have to allow as much density there as you would in areas that didn't have it. And I could keep going through this particular bill. Like I said, that is House Bill 401. A lot of concern with this bill. I think that the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, if they haven't come out against it yet, will shortly. I know that the League of Municipalities has come out against it. One of the other things that is different is, and this has come up here recently, if you all had a quasi-judicial hearing and a traffic impact analysis was submitted, and the North Carolina Department of Transportation signed off on that traffic impact analysis, you all could not use traffic as a reason to turn it down. So basically, if DOT says that it's good from a traffic standpoint, even if other evidence comes in, you cannot consider that other evidence. So that's just another example. The second bill that I wanted to bring to light is one that was actually filed very recently, April 15th. It's the Taxpayer Bill of Rights. This one is actually more concerning than the other one. Essentially, what it does, it puts a constitutional amendment on the ballot that would require that any time that any unit of local or state government wanted to increase taxes, a majority of the people who voted at that general or primary election would have to approve that increase. So let me give you an example of what that potentially could mean. The state of North Carolina passes a law that says we have to have smaller classroom sizes. We have to hire more teachers in Currituck County because of that mandate. So what that means is that now, if the entire population or the majority of population in Currituck County wouldn't approve that, or if it wasn't an election year, we couldn't hold a special election for that, then as we move forward, we would have to cut non-mandated programs out of our budget in order to cover the mandated programs from the state. An example of non-mandated programs are things like EMS, fire, and sheriff. You know, those are the only places where we have, you know, really larger sums of money that we can cut from. And so to me, it, this bill potentially entirely guts local government. I mean, infrastructure, I mean, there are all kinds of things that, while they might not be popular, the way that our form of government works is you are the elected officials, you speak for the people of this community, and so they are basically taking that authority away from the Board of Commissioners and town councils and the General Assembly. It's troublesome. So those are two bills that, in my opinion, I believe that we should adopt a resolution. I know that there's another bill that, in the attorney's report that Ike will go over, but those are two that give me concern from a county manager's standpoint. Be happy to answer any questions.
Yes.
I believe it's just got a Senate bill right now, Senate Bill 717.
That's not an act.
The one about taxpayer rights is Senate Bill 717. The other one that was talking about the housing is House Bill 401, and I believe it's Senate Bill 349.
349. The thing that's interesting about that is both of those bills have bipartisan support to sponsors. The Senate bill is two Republicans and one Democrat that submitted it, and the House bill is three Democrats and two Republicans.
Well, I think the consensus was, I think I heard, let's get a resolution together. Is that the majority of the board agreeing with that?
Yeah, 2,000%.
Okay, that's fine, but then we can...
And I can forward you the...
Have one there for May 3rd.
I will forward you the bill, and also the, not just the bill, but the summary that the School of Government puts together. They do a good job of summarizing any bills that come through, so I'll send that out to the board this evening, so that you can take a look at it between here and next meeting.
No problem with devastating county government.
Yes, sir. I believe so. And that's all that I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stinkle. And now, our first, unique, we hit the opportunity now to have a county attorney's report.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I would note on that last bill that we just discussed, the Democrat Senator in support, Democratic Senator in support is a judge that Currituck County is well familiar with, who had no problem showing his displeasure for local government by entering a $37 million judgment against Currituck County, which was later reversed by the court. On this initial report, I thought it might be a good idea just to explain to you, the board, and as well as any citizens who are now watching or may watch this meeting later, the position of county attorney and the organizational structure of my office. Under the general statutes, all cities and counties in the state, the governing boards are required to appoint an attorney to advise that board. And of course, an extension of that responsibility is typically the representation of all county or city agencies and departments. Here in Currituck, that is the case. Other than the Department of Social Services, which has outside counsel retained to represent it for child protective services matter, I, as county attorney, represent all other county agencies and departments. That includes some that you don't have direct authority or control over, such as the Board of Elections. I attended a Board of Elections meeting last week. The Department of Social Services, I do some work for the Department of Social Services, although they have an outside firm for the bulk of their work, in that I do adult protective services work for them on occasion, some guardianship work on occasion. I was, last year, a guardian for, guardian of the estate for a minor child and handled her financial matters for a period of time under the supervision of the court. Within my department, I'm assisted by a paralegal, Sandy Salambean. Most of you, I think, have had contact with Sandy. She's a very strong support person, I'm very pleased to have her. She spends, in addition to her time supporting me, a lot of her time is spent handling the tax collection efforts that are sent over to us from the Tax Department. Sandy does all the title work, she prepares all the notices to property owners, the initial notices that have to go out for a collection of delinquent taxes. She then... She then prepares all the publication notices in the newspapers. She prepares all the legal documents for judgments to ultimately be entered and filed with the court, and then she ultimately prepares all the documents and assists the Sheriff's Department with ultimately the execution of the judgment that sometimes results in the sale of real property for the collection of those back taxes. Also, within the last year or so, we've added, within, under my department, if that may be changing, to the Finance Department, is the county's contract purchasing agent. For many years, I'd been advocating that the county create a contract purchasing agent position, which the county manager agreed to, and this board funded. My belief, and I think it's going to bear out, that having an individual who is totally on top of the contracting and purchasing matters for the county will help us in the long run save taxpayers money. And I think in some instances, we've seen that by being able to put out for bid contracts, for example, for landscaping, rather than having six, seven different landscape companies, we put together a bid package, and we're able to put different parts of the county. I think we have, you said down to maybe four, four companies, rather than a number of disparate companies doing work all over the county. Also, Rebecca was responsible for drafting, and this board adopted, last August, the county's purchasing and contracting policy. It's not that we didn't follow, in essence, a policy or state law. All counties and cities in North Carolina are required to follow state purchasing and bid laws as we acquire property, dispose of property, acquire services, seek the construction of capital projects. And so while we were doing that, it was helpful to have this board adopt the contract purchasing policy that you did, in order that it helps the public to see that we do have an orderly process that we follow. It helps contractors understand our process, and it also importantly helps our departments understand their obligation and the process to make sure that we get the best service and the best product for the lowest taxpayer dollar. And I think we do very well with that. We have had, for some time, well, over a decade ago, when I came back from my second tour of duty, we noted that there were numbers of instances in which persons who were not authorized to execute contracts on behalf of the county were doing so. We put a stop to that. We implemented a program, which we've been doing for over a decade now, that requires department heads to funnel their contracts that they have negotiated with their respective vendors to my office, where Sandy Salam Bean, my paralegal, inputs that into a computerized process. I review every, she reviews every contract to make sure that the contract is appropriate initially, to make sure that appropriate certificates of insurance are provided, to make sure that if it is a corporation, they are properly incorporated in North Carolina, or have a certificate of authority to do business in North Carolina. Those contracts all then come to me. For my review, I then sign off on a computerized process. It then goes to the county manager, who also reviews the contracts. He then signs off on the computerized process. It then goes to the Finance Office for their ultimate review and the placement of a statutorily required pre-audit certificate, which provides that these, is a certificate from the Finance Officer that she has seen that there is monies budgeted for this particular contract, and the county can make payment under that contract. That is our process, and I think we're very proud of that. And it was even noted at a Local Government Commission meeting, which is an entity within the State Treasurer's Office that oversees local governments' financial policies and management. During the course of that meeting, they noted how Currituck County had one of their most robust contracting practices that they'd seen of any unit of local government in the state. So I think we should be very proud of that, and I think the public should be very proud and satisfied that Currituck County is doing that which it needs to do to make sure that their tax dollars are spent wisely. Couple other things to bring up to you tonight. First of all, relative to real property, last Friday, we had two closings. One, we purchased property, and one closing, we sold property. The county purchased property, 11.6 acres approximately, at the corner of Panther Landing and Tolles Creek Road, there, next to Panther Landing subdivision, or whatever the name of that subdivision is now, is where our convenience center is located. The idea there, of course, is to expand that convenience center ultimately to be able to handle the numbers of citizens that are now moving into the Moayok area, and will give the county additional acreage for other governmental uses going forward into the future. The property that the county sold was Lot Number One in the Maple Commerce Park. It was our first sale of property that's been held for some time for economic development. JD Love LLC is the name of the purchaser. That's Doug Brinley, and his company are going to bring to that site a laundry facility, and perhaps for some other uses there. But it's good and exciting to see that we finally have the first crack in opening it into Maple Commerce Park, and the first business that's going to soon be established within the park. And then, as to legislation, as mentioned by the county manager, there's a number of pieces of legislation we want to be aware of, and want to make sure that our legislative delegation is in opposition to. There are a couple pieces of legislation that have been introduced that we ought to support, I would suggest, and will be helpful to us. Currituck County is a member of the North Carolina Beach Inlet Waterway Association. In fact, I'm vice president of that organization, and that group has been very instrumental in trying to encourage the General Assembly to provide for some type of assured state funding for coastal storm damage mitigation efforts. To that end, there now is House Bill 372 that's been introduced in the General Assembly that would, first of all, redirect register of deed fees that are now paid when someone records a deed or other instrument. There's certain fees that are paid. That money has been diverted for some time into the State General Fund. This bill would return those fees back to where they originally had been going. 30% to the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, 30% to the Land and Water Fund. Importantly to us, 30% would go to the Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Fund. The Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Fund is, it provides costs associated with beach nourishment, artificial dunes, and other projects to mitigate or remediate coastal storm damage, and it's a dollar-for-dollar match, so that there would be some opportunity, perhaps, for us and for other coastal counties to benefit from now this redirection of state revenue into this designated fund. The other piece of legislation is House Bill 500, which similarly establishes a disaster relief and mitigation fund in the Department of Public Safety, and it will allow for the application from local government and nonprofits to apply for funds for flood mitigation efforts, and matching funds for federal grants or funding for projects related to disaster relief and flood mitigation. The bill calls for an initial funding of that program in the amount of $20 million. So those are two pieces of legislation that are indeed, if passed, will help assist coastal units of local government with storm mitigation efforts and flooding mediation and remediation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCree. That was very informative, and I'm sure our listeners out there appreciate these updates from our attorney. The next item on the agenda is public hearings, which is PB 21-07, NC Beach Buggy LLC requests for an auto sales and rental use permit to sell and rent low-speed electric vehicles at 8295 Keritok Highway in Powell's Point Tax Map 124C, Parcel 4 Papa Branch Township. And I would ask at this time, if anybody is going to be providing any testimony, whether it's during a public hearing or otherwise, please stand and get you affirmed. If you could just raise your hand right there. Do you affirm that the testimony that you will provide is the truth and whole truth, nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, I guess, let's see. The presenter on this we have is Jason Littoral. We're going to talk with our... I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, may I please, my name is Attorney Tim Kohler. I've been hired by the NC Beach Buggy LLC to represent the company, as the attorney for the LLC to present this for them. With me tonight is one of my clients, and he will be offering the lion's share of the testimony related to this matter. I'm here to present the evidence on behalf of the company and present that matter for them.
Okay, thank you. We'll bring the county staff up first.
Yes, sir.
And then we'll bring you up next.
So NC Beach Buggy LLC has requested a use permit for auto sales and rental of low-speed electric vehicles. And, see if I can get this to advance here. There it goes. Here you can see an aerial shot of the site. This is Freedom Avenue. Some of you may be familiar with Freedom Business Park in the rear here. It's at the corner of Keritok Highway. It's a multi-tenant building. And you can see here that it is surrounded by general business zoning. The land use plan does designate this site as full service. And here you'll see a site plan that you've seen, or some of you may have seen before back in 2019. There was a use permit issued for this particular property for the sale and rental of vehicles. It was in, let me get my mouse back here, it was in this unit here. I believe the name of that business was Wheels of Steel. And this, you'll see here, their display pad that they proposed for displaying vehicles along with some required Type A buffer yard landscaping that was installed here. We're using the same site plan with one modification, that this would be in, this is the unit here, that this proposed use is going in, and you can see indoor showroom and office labeled there. And that's important because the applicant has indicated that he does not intend to have any storage or display of the vehicles outside the building. It's a 0.92 acre site, and like I say, that there was a use permit in October of 19 issued for the property for the same use. There was a community meeting that was held on January 22 at 5:30. The only attendees were myself and the applicant, and therefore there were no concerns or questions So for the use permit review standards, staff findings, it appears the use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans, in particular Economic Policies ED 1 and 4. The Technical Review Committee does recommend adoption of this use permit with the following conditions of approval. Outdoor storage and display of vehicles is prohibited, and that all items shall be kept inside the building. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Littoral, I just want to make sure I'm clear. Because there is another use permit on site, I believe Wheels of Steel is closed and gone away, but it said that they had 22 parking spaces and 15 available, or all of them were available. I'm trying to find...
I think that's backwards. I believe 15 were required and 22 were available.
So, but that's not really 22 spaces available, because there's four or five units in there. Each unit has its own allocation of spaces, I'm assuming.
Oh, my apologies. Those numbers were for the entire building.
Right.
Yeah.
So they, so this, this particular type of use requires 15 spaces under how we would review this type of business? Is that correct? Am I thinking about that the right way?
This is basically a retail use, and so no, it wouldn't require 15 on its own. That's the required parking for the entire multi-tenant building.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm reading that the right way. Thank you.
And is Wheels of Steel still in operation?
I wasn't aware that they were not, but...
I don't believe they are.
I didn't think they were either, but I didn't know for you for sure.
I didn't know for sure.
Just while we're on Wheels of Steel's subject, so if they are out of business, we should probably look at removing that use permit, if we can do that, because I think that part of their use permit was contingent upon them staying in business.
I'm not sure if that was a condition or not.
Right, well, that way we don't have this other use permit for the property.
Mr. County Attorney, if you can...
Well, because the use permit runs with the land, it would be incumbent upon the property owner to make application for revocation of that use permit.
All right.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, well, I'm going to ask the applicant if he has any questions regarding, at this time, with the staff's evidence that they presented. If not, then thank you, Mr. Littoral, and I'll go ahead now and ask the applicant if they'll come forward.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
As I stated previously, my name's Attorney Timothy Kohler. I'm a East Carolina lawyer here in Barco. I've been hired to represent NC Buggy, NC Beach Buggy LLC. In the hearing on this application for a use permit for the property so described, and in conformity with statute and with the county ordinances, I would ask that my client have the opportunity to come forward. Jason, I'm sorry, Brandon Reed, excuse me, is the managing member of the LLC. And just a few basic, general questions. So according to the paperwork that's been provided, and I don't know that the board has any objection, but as far as the compliance with the package requirements, all of those were submitted timely, and payment was made to the board. The application as submitted indicated that the stated use of the land was for the rental and sale of low-speed electric vehicles, and this is in compliance with the other properties in the area. I would submit, I'm going to indulge for just a moment. If anybody would like to see a hard copy of the overlay maps of the area, would any of the members like to have a copy of that?
That's good, thank you.
So in accordance with the use permit, one of the requirements is that there would be no impact as to the county, excuse me, I'm trying to find my paper. Goodness gracious. That it would not endanger the public health and safety. First and foremost, the, I would ask my client, are you planning on bringing in, storing any sort of hazardous materials regarding these, use of these vehicles? All right, are you going to be operating any sort of...
Thank you.
Are you going to be operating any sort of test driving, or any courses, or anything on this property?
No.
All right, and so the activity on the property is going to be substantially in compliance with what's been there previously?
Yes.
To the best of your knowledge?
Excuse me, Mr. Kohler, really quickly, could you have him, please, just state your name and address for the record?
My name is Brandon Reed. My address, home address is 1812 Champion Circle, Virginia Beach, Virginia.
Okay, thank you.
And just as a matter of foundation, what's your, what is your capacity with the company, NC Beach Buggy LLC?
I'm a member and 50% owner of the company.
Okay. All right, and so you will be, will you be running the day-to-day operation of this business?
Yes, I will.
Okay. All right, and so as such, if there's any additional foundation the chairman would like?
That's, for the record, just so, state his name and address, thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, in terms of injuring the value of adjoining and abutting lands in harmony with the area it is located, I would submit to the board the use permit that was in fact granted by this body for Wheels of Steel. And as accurately stated by the attorney for the county, those use permits do run with the land and the application for termination. Although said permits would have to come from the property owner themselves, being that this is still a valid use permit for the property, I would ask the body to take judicial notice of its finding on the... I would ask that the body to take judicial notice of its finding on the second page under D1, that the use will not endanger the public health and safety, the use do not, it is located in an existing commercial building and general business zoning, and the business consists of rental or licensed, in this one with classic vehicles, we're dealing with electric vehicles, which is substantially similar use and operation and same impact. And in addition, subsection E1, that the use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands would be in harmony with the area which is located, the location surrounded by similar uses than general business zoning, and therefore will not injure the value of abutting lands, and this will be a very small-scale operation. And it's the same with this particular operation that will be in place. There is First Flight Motorcycles, which is literally a hop, skip, and a jump from where this is going to be, a substantially similar business. They do sell and consign motorcycles, do motorcycle repairs, things of that nature. Biggest difference between the two is that we won't be having any vehicles outside. Everything will be stored inside, anything that's rental will be stored inside, any sales will be basically customer orders direct, and then the customer will arrive to take delivery and then they'll go on their merry way. So they're not going to be showing anything, we're not going to have salesmen walking around, no guys outside flipping signs. So it's not going to be a business like that. We all know, in Currituck County, we like to have very conservative and very respectful signage and advertising, and so it's not going to be anything like that. We are, so we're asking that the body would take judicial notice of its findings from that prior order, which would be the PB 1918, this is the Wheels of Steel use permit. So we'd ask that she takes judicial notice in lieu of having to bring yet another expert witness to testify to the exact same thing that we already know. Again, we're, it's substantially the same business, the only difference is we don't have gasoline-burning vehicles, we have electric vehicles. So that's, that's really the only difference between the two operations, and we're looking at two, two-unit town. In addition, the planned use does comply with the officially adopted plan. The county made no recommendations on changing any of the planning on any of the structure. There's not going to be any change to the structure, there's not going to be any change to the appearance, they're not bringing anything, they're not knocking out walls or expanding anything. So there was no recommendation from the county. My client did comply with all the requirements, there was a community meeting, as was previously stated, the only one that showed up was the county representative, and there have been no objections filed. And other than that, there's no impact to any schools, there's not any schools anywhere in the near vicinity. There, the county will be able to provide adequate facilities. Like I said, it's directly within the scope of use of what's already been there, and Other than that, I believe my clients have met all their requirements to the county. Unless the board has any questions, we'd be happy to answer. If you need additional documentation, we'd be happy to provide.
Any questions from the board?
What, I mean, is it a golf cart and a whatever?
Looks like a golf cart, slightly bigger. They are all street legal, so they will require title and tags.
Sure, it's all.
Sure, yes.
How many, just to figure out how fast it is?
About 25 miles an hour, 26 miles an hour.
I think they have to do that, do not? To be a lot more people, yeah.
Yes.
We'll get you on.
They're very nice.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Kevin. Okay, if not, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up a public hearing. I believe, Mr. Kohler, you had signed up for that, but I believe it was to speak.
Yes, sir. It was on behalf of my client.
I just wanted to check that off and make sure. I have no one else signed up for the public hearing, if anybody show up late that we wish you to speak on this. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and also close the evidentiary stage of this hearing. And I will then ask the board if, take action if anybody has a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to approve PB 19-18 use permit with staff recommendations and conditions, because the applicant has demonstrated the proposed use meets the use permit review standards of the UDO. The suggested conditions from the staff include outdoor storage and display of vehicles is prohibited, all items shall be kept inside the building at all times, the use will not endanger the public health or safety, the use will not be in danger to the public health or safety as it's located in an existing commercial building in the general business zoning district, the business consists of rental of licensed class, licensed electric vehicles. Two, the use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it's located, the location is surrounded by similar uses in the general business zoning district, and therefore will not injure the value of abutting lands, this will be a very small-scale operation. Three, the use will be in conformity with the land use plan or officially adopted plans. The 2006 land use plan classifies this site as full service within the Point Harbor subarea. The proposed use is in keeping with the policies of the plan, including policies ED 1 and ED 4. And four, the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. There will be no effect on the school system. Currituck County has other adequate public facilities to serve this use.
Thank you, Commissioner Jarvis. We have a first, I'll go ahead and second this. Do we have any further discussion from the board?
Yes, point of clarification, in Commissioner Jarvis's motion, she said PB 19-18. Isn't it PB 21-07?
Yes, it is. I read off the paper. Excuse me, that is correct. Thank you, Commissioner Etheridge. Once again, that is PB 21-07. I didn't catch that, thank you.
Okay, any other further discussions? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to ask the board for action, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion passes, thank you very much. We're doing good. The next item is new business. We have board appointments for Board of Adjustments.
Mr. Chairman, before we have the appointments for Board of Adjustment, I'd like to ask the county attorney that she would explain to the general public exactly what a member on the Board of Adjustment's duties are, what the Board of Adjustment has.
Well, the Board of Adjustment serves and acts as a quasi-judicial body, just like this board did a few minutes ago with that last application. The Board of Adjustment is authorized to hear and determine whether variances from application of the ordinance to property in the county should be granted, and secondly, to consider appeals from determinations made by the planning director or the technical review committee. Their proceedings are just like, again, the proceeding you went through a few moments ago, where they may only consider substantive competent evidence presented to them in the course of the proceeding, and those decisions must be based upon findings, much like, well, the variance in particular, much like you just made pre-issuance of this use permit. As to determinations or appeals from decisions made by planning staff or by the technical review committee, the board sits in the role of that planning staff, planning director, or technical review committee, and may make any decision that that staff member could have made, which means they can affirm, repeal, or modify the decision made regarding an interpretation or determination of the ordinance in this application.
Thank you. Okay, I believe we have Commissioner Etheridge, did you have an appointment for the Board of Adjustments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to appoint Sam Miller to fill the vacancy that was created when Mr. Roddy resigned.
Okay.
A second.
Do you have a motion, a second? We have any discussions on the appointment?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. I think government needs to have the participation of knowledgeable citizens, but I think boards are also obligated to provide fair and unbiased decisions. Citizens have the right here in Currituck County to expect the decisions that are to the best public interest, and that they do not appear to the benefit of individuals. I think that's one thing that people have always been critical of people who serve. I think the Board of Adjustment coordinates appeals that affect land use, and therefore I do not think you need to appoint an individual onto the Board of Adjustment who is an administrator.
Thank you, and I'll just make a comment on that. My previous Board of Adjustments appointment was Zia Montesi. She's a real, she was in real estate for years. She was a real estate agent in the county, so real estate. She served on that Board of Adjustments and made decisions based on fact and have not had the first concerns or anybody addressed any issues with her sitting on there being a real estate agent, even though issues with land, land purchasing, and land development did come before that board. So I understand where you come from, and I think it's our duty to make sure that the people we do appoint, that they have no outlying issues that I think the board could bring forward. So I think it's hard to get good, sound individuals that can be fair and biased, and I think, I think when a commissioner appoints a nominee, I believe they do do some research on that individual to make sure they're appointing someone because it reflects them, their decision in their area. That being said, I do respect your comment, but I did have a real estate agent that performed well on the Board of Adjustments.
I think there's a big difference between, I will say, management and development.
Well, in that vein, and to your point, these boards should be reflective of the people that live in this community. And your occupation, maybe other than a strip club, shouldn't really matter.
I mean, what if the kids, the guy that comes before the Board of Adjustments, his kid works for Domino's Pizza, and the guy gave him a $10 tip, and, you know what I'm saying? I mean, there's so many what-if scenarios that you could have. I mean, if you have somebody who's qualified, educated, and willing, the hardest thing is, and I know the other, you guys, is to get somebody to sign up to do it, or if they do do it, to get them to actually come to the meetings.
I've been looking for four months to find an applicant, and I have prided myself over my entire career as a commissioner of appointing good quality people who have integrity and do not have a bias one way or the other, who knows how to ask the pertinent questions and then hear the evidence and weigh it out and make a decision just like we do. And I went through this in 2007, when any appointment I made was to not push through because the other commissioners overruled me. And this board made a policy at that time that any commissioner that makes an appointment, that appointment is theirs, and it's without question.
I'm certainly not saying that I think I'm talking about Mr. Miller's integrity. I would never do that. What I'm saying is, to the general public, when they see that we're appointing developers to the Board of Adjustment, guess the bias that it looks, the appearance, that's my concern about it.
And I just want to chime in too, that I had some qualms. I made several phone calls today with current members and former members of the Board of Adjustments, and they were split on how they felt about this appointment. But ultimately, I landed on giving Mr. Miller an opportunity. It is quasi-judicial. I know he has a great deal of knowledge, and as one person pointed out to me, his analytical skills and his vast knowledge will be welcomed on this type of quasi-judicial board. So although I have my qualms, I will give Mr. Miller the opportunity.
I'd like to say one thing too. I believe when he was on the Economic Development Board, I was a commissioner at the time for part of it, and Mr. Lombardi was, oversaw that board. I think his attendance actually, if it wasn't perfect, I think he might have missed one meeting or whatever. So I mean, it's somebody that, that will show up. I mean, that's the biggest thing, is to make somebody, to pick somebody that's knowledgeable, that actually cares, and his reputation speaks for itself. I've never heard anybody say anything bad about the guy, so.
This isn't about Mr. Miller, it's about him being a developer.
Well, that's, that's Mr. Miller, that's what he does for a living. I'm a cop, so if somebody hates cops, they could hate me. So I mean, it's the same thing.
Okay, well, thank you for the comments, board. I think at this time, we'll take some action on this nomination. All in favor of Commissioner Owens' appointment, 25%. Aye. Aye, all opposed. Okay, motion passes, thank you. I believe that's all the Board of Adjustments we had at this time. That being said, that the next item on the agenda is our consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second from Commissioner Jarvis, all in favor. Aye, all opposed, motion passes. And I believe that takes care of our meeting, so I'll have a motion for adjournment.
So moves.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner McCord, all in favor. Aye, all opposed.
That was painless.
Thank you.